Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the New Year's edition of the Rowan County Commission. We are pleased that you are here with us today. Looks like maybe there's some New Year's resolutions to start coming to the county commission meeting, so good for you. We hope you won't abandon it after this first meeting, but somehow I don't think that's the case. Well, we're glad that you're here. So today's January 6th, and again, we're glad that you're here today. I don't have a big agenda today, so it should run fairly smoothly. Couple of things that we begin our meetings with and have for a long, long time. We're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance. We're also going to have what's called a solemnizing prayer. Now, for those of you who haven't joined us before, solemnizing prayer is not for you, it's for us. And so we have a chaplain that'll come forward, Chaplain Taylor. Where's Chaplain Taylor? Is he here? There, he's right in front of me. I'm sorry.
Hard to see.
Yeah, Happy New Year, Chaplain. And he'll provide the solemnizing prayer. It's for us, for the commissioners, because what we do here in our roles with the county, we take very seriously, and we seek wisdom in every possible way to make the decisions that are in the best interest of all the folks of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Our Father, we thank you for the privilege to be here today. We thank for our county commissioners. Dear Lord, we start this new year off, dear Lord, and we thank for bringing us through the last year. We pray, Lord, you give them the wisdom they need today, this meeting today, and this next year, guide and direct them, dear Lord. Thank for the work they do, thank for the dedication that they have for what they do, and thank for Rowan County, dear Lord, and we thank you for them and the mission before us this next year and them. For your guidance and direction, dear Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. As always, appreciate you being here. So, let's see. Got some changes to the agenda, commissioners. Were brought to us by email from our clerk. So we've got, um, let's see, we've got an item that has to do with the CDBG Chewy Waters, or the sewer construction grant. We're going to add that as consent item C. After that, we have the agreement for services with the Rowan County Sheriff's Department as item D on consent. We have our proclamation for Martin Luther King Junior Day as item E. And then today, we were notified about a North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Office of Rural Health grant that needs to be made. We'll make that item F, as in Frank. Also, in our closed session, we had advertised the closed session would be for a client, attorney-client privileged communication. We are going to add two more items, a personnel matter for an attorney-client privileged communication, and also to discuss an honorary recognition. So those will be added to consent. I'm sorry, those two are added to our closed session. Yes, sir. Do we have any others that need adjustments, adding, deleting? If not, do we hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then, a motion to approve, well, we just did that, that's fine. All right, then, we've got the minutes of December 16th, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then, the consent agenda as it was amended is before us. Motion to approve, and a second for the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then, we have our public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yep.
To speak. All right. All right, Charles David Allen.
Yes, sir.
Come on up, Mr. Allen. Welcome, we're glad you're here. Come on up to the microphone there. We're going to, Mr. Allen's from China Grove.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you, sir.
I have a neighbor that lives 1730 China Grove Road. I've been dealing with since 2016 with a sewer problem. He had it running in a creek out there. I called the EPA and Mooreville, talked to Barry Love, and he told me it was up to the county. So I went to the county, talked to Ted Ansteler, and filed a petition to go to court with it, and we went to court three different times. It was dismissed. He'd never fixed it, and everything else, and he had a sewer running in the creek for almost four years. And I can't stand to go outside, can't open my doors on my house, can't open the doors on my car, can't have company or nothing because of it, and nobody's done anything. And this is my last resort, I guess.
Well, it's a good last resort.
Sir.
Jay, we've, can I give this back to you and get your phone number?
Yes, sir.
If you'll come up here and write down your phone number, we'll have our county attorney and county manager reach out to you. We'll save that for them. Here's a pen, just, it's all right, right here. Just put that paper up here and write your phone number down, and then we'll call you and, um, all right, thank you very much. Pass that down to Jay.
You want these to go with?
You want the pictures? All right, we'll have our county attorney call you, okay? All right, thank you, sir.
Is that your only copy?
Yeah.
Is that your only copy of the photograph?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for coming, and our county attorney, J. Dees, will be in contact with you.
Those photos and stuff, can I get them back? Can we later on?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, so third item on the agenda, Aaron Poplin, public hearing for ZO-9-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a public hearing for ZO-919, a request from RA and CBICUD to CBICD from Daniel Gomez. This is located at 15185 US 52 Highway in Gold Hill, and it comprises three tax parcels. So the property are three tax parcels, 542, 030, 044, and 045. It's about 2.29 acres, and the zoning is split between rural agricultural and CBI with a conditional use district. Now, back in 2013, parcels 542, 045, and 044, which are the ones to the right here, were rezoned from rural agricultural to CBI with a conditional use district to allow for automobile sales. So taking a look at the site, we can see it's still acting as a used car lot today. They got their office there and a couple of cars for sale. Now, this request takes part-
What were the cars in the back?
Those are more cars for sale. That's all on this, I have a larger photo I can show you here. That's all on this tract right here, which has already been approved for the used car So this request is in the commercial and industrial area and on the commercial highway corridor of the Eastern Area Land Use Plan. And in that area, it does encourage commercial and industrial uses that have a need for rail or US highway access in the area. If we take a look at the zoning in the area, we have a very large swath of industrial zoning, a couple of spots of CBI zoning, and then mostly rural agricultural for the rest of it. If we take a look in the area, it's primarily forested land. There's not really many uses close by. There's a use about 2,000 feet north that's commercial, and about 1,000 feet south that's commercial. But then there's also two adjoining residences. So we take a look at what's being applied for today. They're requesting for a CBI with a conditional district, which will only allow for the requested uses, which are continued automobile sales. They want to add auto mechanic shop and a used tire shop as well. And that would be this building number two right here, which is a, which is a three-bay garage, a 1,200-square-foot building, and then add some gravel parking for both display and for parking for customers who would like to come get their cars repaired or purchase used tires. There's also a 20-foot buffer area here between the home site and the commercial use, which is required in the zoning ordinance. And that buffer would comprise of a 20-foot buffer along with 100% opaque fencing. And then potential impacts on facilities. US 52 has got a design capacity of 15,000 vehicles based on the width of the road and the speed limit. And as of 2018, there's about 7,300 cars per day. And then using trip estimates found by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, 7th Edition, both the new uses, the used tires and the auto mechanic shop, will generate about 64 trips total together in any given day. Then back in November, we had a planning board courtesy hearing on it, and the two statements, the statement of consistency and the statement of reasonableness here, were adopted. And then just a couple of comments, since this is a conditional district, the board and the applicant may have some mutually agreed-upon conditions. And with the conditional use, with the conditional district, only what's being asked for is what will be allowed. So the site plan shown here is all they'd be allowed to construct there, and those would be the only uses allowed for those three lots together. And that there is a 110-foot observed right-of-way in that area, which is why the setbacks are so far off the road. And then procedurally today, we'll need to adopt a statement of reasonableness, a statement of consistency, and then approve, deny, or table the request. And both me and the applicant are here today for any questions.
Aaron, I have a question.
Yes.
With the size of these businesses, is he required to have a septic system?
That would be something for environmental health. I believe if they wanted to put a bathroom in there, they would need to get it perked.
So they're not required to?
At least not for zoning, but that would be something I'd need to check with building or environmental health.
So the only question I have is, with used tires, I guess there's the potential of collecting tires. So how can we, on behalf of neighbors that would be passing by, make sure that this doesn't turn into a tire?
I guess worried about tires piling up outside.
Yeah.
You could look at having that as a condition on there, that no tires, storage outside, or something along those lines, to ensure that there isn't a buildup of tires?
And, you know, I don't run a car repair business, obviously, you know, kind of the same with collecting vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
We see some repair places where they end up collecting vehicles back behind, so that's the only thing I'm worried about, is collecting backs of tires and that turning into a collection of vehicles that are not repairable.
Right. And you could look at that as one of the, you could come up with a way for that to be one of the conditions as well, that-
Well, under what we're about to do here, do we have any specific rules about that in this type of zoning, where they, it couldn't turn into a, I don't know what we'd call it, and we're familiar with one, Craig, kind of near us.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say if we've got a concern about the visibility of it, is to require screening on the roadside as well as from the neighbors. I mean, we can't really dictate a guy, his inventory.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that, and screening was where I was going next. And so if there's going to be a storage area here, and I don't know that there is, but there's certainly the potential for that, but again, I don't know the business plan of this type of business. So I'm just trying to think, what are folks going to ask us about this down the road, and why didn't we bring it up? So if there's going to be storage of vehicles or storage of tires, you know, could we require some type of screening on the opposite side of building two?
Yeah, because right now-
Or maybe no one else is really concerned about that.
Yeah, right now, we do have, there is screening on the, trying to get them out, there we go, on this side, right here, on the side that faces the home. If you are looking to possibly add screening along these sides, that could be something you might want to talk to the applicant about and see if they also agree to add some more screening, just to shield the neighbors from view.
Is there not a, excuse me, isn't there a number of cars?
Yeah.
That you can have on piece of property that aren't serviced?
We do for the junk motor vehicles. It's, you're allowed five junk motor vehicles by right, and then another five that have been covered up by TARP. Those are typically what we apply to people in their residences. And normally, with like a, with a business of this nature, we don't norm, don't typically get called on, something like that.
But you, but we can, we can in a conditional district-
Yes, we can set limits on that.
-half the number of vehicles on the lot. So you do have that option. It's one that the applicant needs to agree to. You can't force the condition, but if we can talk to them and agree to that. And the same thing with regard to the outdoor storage of tires. I don't think outdoor storage of tires is necessarily permitted, is it, for what they're proposing for the use?
They've not called for any outdoor storage of tire on there, so they wouldn't, that wouldn't be something they'd be allowed to do.
Can we go ahead and make that a condition?
Yeah, we could add that as a condition.
Of this zoning is no outdoor storage of tires. I think these are items that you can deal with through this process if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, since the applicant is here, can we have him come up, and let's just see what his business plan is, and make sure we don't prohibit him from making money?
Yep.
Where's he, is this the entrance of 52? Can you help?
Hey, welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Yeah, we just want to open like used tires, so pretty much it's going to be like the people go in, change the tires, and nobody's going to like keep the car right there.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My address?
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've got that on it. So are your used tires going to be stored inside or outside? I think probably what I'm getting at, and the rest of the commissioners can say, well, don't worry about that, if that's the way we feel. We've all seen repair places, but we've all seen junkyards, too. And so I just, I think what we want to do on behalf of folks around you is just make sure that this isn't a junkyard versus a repair facility.
We're not planning to keep like all cars or something like that, no.
Would you be willing to put up more screening around the perimeter?
Yeah, if we have to, we can.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Planning Department?
All right. Is this the, are they going to have an entrance just for this business?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so have you already gotten that approved by the state?
I already sent the papers, and I think we're going to get approved for it.
So you'll have, well, we're, where it's marked out here, the footage of this one lot, 26862, where that, that's where you're going to go in at?
Yes.
At the new spot? Aaron, let me ask you, just to kind of safeguard this, if by chance, he opens up, he does his screening, and there gets to be a problem with too many vehicles, could we come back and adjust this conditional use permit?
If it was, if it was a condition to limit the amount of vehicles, then we could come back, because they went over what they could have, and we could put them in zoning violation.
Okay.
If we didn't have that as a condition to get at the start of this, then they would, then we wouldn't be able to go back and change the zoning.
Okay, so if we put any number in there, and he violates that number, then we have the ability to come back and reexamine the conditional use permit?
Yeah, if they, if he has too many, if we put a condition of X amount of cars that he's allowed to have out there, and they go over that, we can put them under violation, and then we can explore the process of either expanding that amount, or we can make them reduce to meet what their conditional district standards are.
You good with that?
I mean, I don't know that I want to put a limit on cars. I'm just more worried about screening, or maybe I shouldn't even, maybe this isn't an issue.
Well, I understand your concern, and I share that concern, provided if he was going to bring wrecked cars in and was going to have to disassemble them and then reconstruct them and paint them and then put them out for sale, but I don't think that's his intent here. I think he just mainly wants to bring cars in for oil change, this kind of stuff, and put some used tires on it and out the door. So as long as he has that business model, I really don't have a problem. But I would like to put some type of limit in there, just so that if it gets to be an issue, we have a way to bring him back in and adjust it.
Well, I'd rather put a limit of vehicles on there than to ask him to screen this whole front. If he's trying to start a business, he wants people to be able to see what's going on, rather than having screening all the way up through there.
I agree.
And they don't know what's going, if people don't know what's going on behind it, they're not as likely to pull in there and use his services.
The only screening I was concerned about, which I think is already in place, is between him and the residence.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't really want him to screen his road frontage, that's why he's there.
Exactly.
Is for the exposure. Sir, are you good if we put a limit on the number of cars?
It's okay.
I can be talked out of this. I just wanted to bring the issue up, and if we don't, if the board doesn't feel like this is a strong issue, then I'm okay with that.
Well, I know that we've had conversations on several locations about what it looks like coming into our county, and this is Highway 52, and it's coming in, you know, from Stanley County, and is this the look we want to have coming in? And that's, that's my big concern, is what if it gets out of hand?
Yeah, if I'm the applicant, I don't see storing a lot of vehicles on the property. I know that's not what he's there to do, but that, that could happen. So my question would be, where it says 123A, is that a building behind that?
Let's see.
Where it says 123A, to your left.
Oh, that's the acreage. So behind that, that's an, oh, sorry, that's an existing structure.
Okay, what is that?
That's for the, for the well, for the well?
Oh, it's, oh, it's just a wellhouse? Oh, okay. Well, then, how about that we say behind that, along the, horizontally behind that, we require that if they're going to store vehicles there, that there be buffering between that wellhouse and the, in the back? That would, is that an idea?
In other words, he can store his vehicles behind that wellhouse, provided it's screened.
Screening behind that wellhouse along the horizontal line of that lot.
Okay.
So essentially, this area, right here?
Right, right behind, right behind the wellhouse and along the horizontal axis there.
Okay.
If he would, would that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
We don't want to slow your business down at all. We're glad you're starting business, and we wish you great luck, and we'll probably all be bringing cars to you at some point, so we hope you do well. We just have to make sure we're looking out also for the, for the county. Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant, or for Aaron?
I have one more.
Okay.
What is the number that triggers the additional screening?
I just think if he's going to store vehicles, I don't know, this is-
Just put any vehicle storage has to be behind that wellhouse with the screening.
Okay, okay. All right, so then we'll move to a public hearing, and so we'll open a public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to contribute to this conversation from the public, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And so we have on page three, yes, sir. I'm just asking, Aaron, real quick, did any neighbors or people in the area contact?
We didn't have anybody, either from the neighbors or come to either hearing or give us a call.
And the Rowan County Planning Board, they had a courtesy hearing for the request at their November meeting. They had no concerns with the site as proposed. The planning board approved the request and adopted our statements. So let me offer up as a motion, a statement of consistency. Z-09-19 is consistent with Eastern Land Use Plan based upon the identified use in the attached site plan. Furthermore, the adoption of ZO-9-19 is reasonable and in the public interest based upon the same. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Statement of reasonableness, in accordance with Section 21-362J of the Rowan County Zoning Ordinance, and after due consideration, the planning board advises that Z-09-19 request is reasonable and in the public interest based upon identified usage and compatibility with Eastern Land Use Plan and the requested zoning. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So then, I make a motion that we approve Z-09-19.
Mr. Chairman, should we not add the cover?
With, with the, with the conditions that we discussed.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck to you. Hope it's a good year for you. All right, Shane, Z-10-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So the request here, Z-1019, before you, comes from the Price of Freedom Museum, and also, to a small degree, the Kenneth Segal and his property there at 2420 Weaver Road. If you look at the map here, see the property outlined in red. It is currently zoned rural agricultural, at least the museum portion. You do have some areas in gray that are rural residential. Mr. Segal owns property in that district. But this provides the most illustration of the changes that become a little bit wordy in the report, I'm sure, but the museum property outside the right-of-way is just about six acres, and it currently zoned RA. The museum, along with the Segal tract, they're going to swap about a third of an acre each, and the museum would pick up this frontage area here in the back. Technically, .29 would go back to the Segal property. But the museum tract, as it would be completed with the .29 added from Segal, the proposal would go to institutional in the zoning designation here, RA to the institution. Also, this balance here, going back to Segal, would go to rural residential. So I'll take a look at a few of the pictures here. For those that might be familiar with that, the history around this site, it used to operate as old Patterson School until 76, and up until, what, less than two and a half months ago, the school system still owned the property. Museum bought it, I think there was some time between '04 that they were operating the property as a museum, but the purpose of this request would be to get the property into proper zoning, compliance with the use, and also would anticipate a future expansion at that museum, too, for some warehousing needs. But the top two images show the existing improvements, and down below, you see the frontage along Weaver Road. And on the top, this is the home adjacent, the Aldridge residence, to the right, if you're standing in the road. Then across the road, a couple other houses there, the Hart and McCorkle residence. Institutional's pretty bare bones. It only allows a specific group in the service sector, primarily around the social and the health sectors of that SIC structure, and some in public administration, but very exclusive group. We only have, this would be the third in the county since 2003, when the planning board adopted that, and the board of commissioners, the change in district. If you look at the land use plan, it's in blue, Area 1, it's the most rural part of our study area in the western- part of our study area in the western part. No specific recommendations for this request here. And as typical with our process, letters go out to people within 100 feet, sign on the property. We received one call, and it was only an interested party, what the sign was about. Everybody seems to be happy the museum is there. And procedurally, just like previous, it received unanimous approval from the planning board, two statements there. They're on page four of the staff report, and also on the screen here. Any questions?
All right, Shane, thank you. On November 25th, 2019, the planning board took this up. No one spoke at the planning board meeting concerning the request, and they voted unanimously 8-0 to recommend approval. So we will open the floor for a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak for or against, or have any comments. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and let's see, we have...
I got them here if you want them.
You got them? All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Can I ask one question, Jay?
Sure.
Before we start, why wouldn't this property have come to us as excess?
Did we not do that? Oh, we did that before when we were talking about Cleveland and Woodleaf. I think we, they offered this back to us, and we took care of this and let them take it back.
So it did come before?
I believe it came to us with Cleveland, if I remember correctly.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm old. I can't remember everything.
Your memory's probably better than mine, still.
Thank you. So it did come before us as excess? That's what?
I will confirm that for you.
Thank you very much. And write it down for me, will you?
Carol.
So I can refer back to it.
All right, go ahead, Craig.
Well, what are we doing? I'm just kidding. I'm making a formal motion. The statements of consistency for Z-1019 is consistent with the Western Land Use Plan based on the following. Institutional District is a very exclusive zoning district and is set aside for public use, and therefore matches the former use that was a school and the current use for a museum. Institution will also create a conforming use, taking away the non-conforming use and allow for the expansion of the museum to the greater good of the public. Make that formal a motion.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right?
Offer up the motion for statements of reasonableness in accordance with Section 21-361J of the Rowan County Zoning Ordinance, and after due consideration, the planning board advises that Z-1019 request is reasonable and is in the public interest based on the following: a good reuse of an existing abandoned school, public school building, as a public museum well fitted into the institutional zoning district. It is reasonable this creates conforming zoning to the existing non-conforming use.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then do we have a...
Make a motion to approve Z-1019.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that passes. Thank you, planning board. Appreciate it. Happy New Year. Mark Scott, Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott is president of Emerald Bay Homeowners Association, joins us this afternoon to discuss a request from their association for a no wake zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, yes, sir.
For those that don't know, and maybe you all do, the Emerald Bay Association or the development is in the southeast corner of the county, on Panther Creek, and right next to the Eagle Point Nature Preserve. The reason that I'm here to represent our association, and I would add that we had our annual meeting back in mid-November, and the association approved me coming forward to represent them, to make this request to the county commissioners. But the reason that I'm here is because of safety concerns on Panther Creek, and in particular, down by our community docks. The, we get a lot, there's a fair amount of boat traffic that comes through, but in particular, speedboats, jet skis, and of greatest concern to us from a safety standpoint are water skiers and boats pulling children on tubes. And that's because they come on down, and in the vicinity of our dock, there's, the Panther Creek gets a bit wider, and that's where they'll choose to turn around. And they do so at a fairly high rate of speed, and it is not uncommon to see them come very close to the community docks, and other docks on both sides of Panther Creek down in that area. And so because of the safety concern, we believe that a no wake zone should be placed in the area of the, of the community piers. Now, I would also add that there's a danger buoy that's a little bit further upstream from our community docks, and that has been put in place by the Wildlife Commission. At least, I assume that's who put it in place. Somebody went out there and dropped it. It's an official buoy. And that's turned into a kind of pylon that speedboats and jet skis tend to drive on down and use that like the old aircraft, racing aircraft, used to do around pylons. Well, they do the same thing around that, which then swings the water skiers and the kids on the, on the tubes in a wide arc and close to the docks in the area. Now, the Wildlife Commission has a process for approving no wake zones and getting them as an official part of the state list of no wake zones. And if it would help the discussion, and I don't expect it to go, need to go very long, but I did bring copies of that, if you wanted them now or you wanted them later.
Yeah, just hand them to the clerk. And Mark, we talked earlier today, and in our packet is a copy of those regs, so we've got them.
Okay.
I was gonna make some others, but...
I did include on one copy, the web address for the...
That's something we don't have, so why don't you go ahead and give that to us?
Okay, and I did include the web address for the, for where I got this, and other information that they have on applying for a no wake zone. And part of the reason that I'm here is the Wildlife Commission does not accept applications from individuals or organizations. They will only accept applications from municipalities and counties. And so that's why I'm here. And so what we're looking for, and this is, as you and I had discussed, this is the beginning of the process, and we're looking for support from the commissioners to pursue this process with the Wildlife Commission, to get approval for a no wake zone, to protect against the safety issues that we see. Any questions?
Well, good. Any questions for Mark?
Now, you're looking for a no wake zone in the bay where your development is, and what are you, are you asking us to do anything with the marker that's out in the channel, though?
No.
Okay.
So there's, there's not a, that danger buoy that I talked about?
Yes.
Is not out in the channel. It's actually upstream in Panther Creek. So, you know, Eagle Point Nature Preserve is upright on the channel. This is the other end of Panther Creek, where it starts to get shallower, particularly when the lake is down four or five feet. We're not asking that anything be done there. Somebody put it there for a reason. They thought that there was some safety hazard, I assume, because it gets shallow from there further up Panther Creek when the, when the lake is down. And people still move through there at a pretty high rate of speed. We're just looking for a no wake zone to protect particularly our community pier. I mean, we have people that use, we have 10 slips there. We have people that use that, that, you know, when they back their boats out, boat traffic can be a hazard for them as well. And we also have people that swim down there, and off of that dock and off of other docks in the area.
So our part of this really is, as Mark said, individuals or organizations cannot apply, so this would need to come from us. So this isn't granting permission for a no wake zone. It is just us beginning the process, and so the county then would go forward with the process. And the wildlife would do a study, so again, it's not us making this decision. The wildlife group would come back to us and let us know what their finding is, and they'd make a recommendation as to where the no wake zone would begin. Most importantly is, we appreciate the folks from your homeowners' association being here. There's a lot of folks that are here today, so thank you for coming. But across the lake, folks from Panther Point have, they'll have opportunity to also be involved in this because we'll have to make public notices, and we'll also have a public hearing before any of this is done. So a question was asked to me earlier, who would not want a no wake zone there? And I don't know who wouldn't, but we might find someone that does. And so that'll flesh that out and give us an opportunity and the state to hear from all sides, if there are all sides.
Right.
So all we're asking today is that we consider approving the request from Emerald Bay Association to pursue the no wake zone there on Panther Creek.
And the motion is to set a public hearing.
Set a public hearing, okay, got you.
Yeah, that public notice and stuff like that is all a required part of the application, the final application that goes to the Wildlife Commission.
And I believe we have to identify a financially responsible party, too?
I didn't notice anything in there, but...
I think somebody else is gonna be paying. I don't think we pay for it.
Oh, for, pay for what?
Buoy.
Ah, yes.
And the maintenance, and the ongoing maintenance.
But we can deal with that as part of the process.
We did discuss that at our association meeting.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept a request from the HOA of Emerald Bay to move forward with procedures to have a no wake zone presented to the Wildlife Commission.
And schedule a public hearing.
When do we schedule it?
Pick a meeting.
We gotta get 30-day notice?
Well, it's gonna get, they're gonna, do we have to pick a meeting? And because they've got work to do, and we don't know...
All right, and then schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Make it 30 days.
If you're not ready, if you're not ready now to set that date, you've given us enough to know, but what you can do is, when we do have a date for a public hearing, we can do that on a consent agenda, understanding that that just creates delays.
I only hesitate because there's work that's gotta be done by organizations that we don't control. And so...
So when they tell us they're ready for us to go forward, if they understand that we can put it on a consent agenda to set the public hearing, you know, there's two weeks, three weeks delay, and when that happens, after you tell us that you're ready to go?
Yeah, well, the issue will not be us ready to go. It'll be the Wildlife Commission doing their study and providing their recommendation, their recommendation.
Yeah, we do our public hearing before that.
The flow chart shows that after that, after the...
The public hearing is about whether to submit the application to the Wildlife Group.
Excuse me, if I could.
Yeah.
If you, if, looking at the flow chart, the request for a study is made, a recommendation comes back, and then the commissioners decide, based on the recommendation, do you want to proceed or not? Because you could choose not to proceed. And at that point in time, as I read it, is when a public notice would go out that this is being considered.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing before we submit the resolution to the wildlife resource.
Right.
Yeah.
Seems backwards to me, but okay.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, you know. Well, I'll make a motion then to set a public hearing for February, I think it's the second, February 3rd, excuse me.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? And we can double-check that to make sure we're reading that right. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's a 3 o'clock meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
This is a 3 o'clock meeting.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm tired of doing it at night, doing something like this. I mean, come on. Just trying to speed it up. The spring's gonna be here.
You mean during this meeting? All right, board appointments. Agriculture Advisory Board, Mike Shepherd has applied to fill a seat, currently occupied, and will become vacant on January 31st. Mr. Nichols is the seat he'll be filling, but he's not eligible for reappointment. So we have a motion to approve Michael Shepherd.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Historic Landmarks, Landmarks Commission, Jonathan Barbie, applied to fill a vacancy that will expire April 30th. At the conclusion of the term, he'll be eligible for reappointment for a three-year term. So Jonathan Barbie, motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Parks and Rec, Alex Bruce and Dennis Rogers have applied to fill an at-large seat. Do we have a motion for one of those?
I'll rec.
Dennis Johnson.
Rogers? Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, yeah, yeah, yeah. Then I make a motion that we, let me make sure, a motion that we move into closed section, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181183 for attorney-client privilege communication regarding a personnel matter, and for attorney-client privilege communication regarding potential litigation, and 1433181182 to discuss an honorary recognition. Make that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as soon as we clear the room, we'll begin. Thank you all for coming. All right, we've come out of closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.